Good evening and welcome to the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting on September 26th at 6:00 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you would join me as we start every meeting with a moment of silent reflection before we get going. Thank you. And now if you would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Item number five is correspondence. This evening, we have one piece of correspondence from Jackson County looking for a motion to receive the correspondence in place on file.
So moved Griffith.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number six is opportunity for, that I always look forward to, to introduce and recognize our, one of our award-winning employees for the second quarter. The winner is Elise Fuentes, and Elise is supposed to be here with us on Zoom. And I don't know if she is.
She's there with Rusty.
Okay, alright. Ah, okay, up in the upper right. So it's an honor to be the person who gets to read a little bit of the nomination that gained Elise Fuentes the award in the second quarter. So Elise is a deputy circuit court clerk, and here's what one of the persons from the public said that was very influential in Elise winning this award. Quote, "She was so helpful, very kind and patient. They helped me fill out a personal protection order and guided me through the process. She is very helpful, kind, and all-around nice. Thank you." So Elise, at the Board of Commissioners, we would like to thank you for delivering superior customer service to our citizens here in the county, and I would ask my colleagues to join in and give me a round of applause. As is customary, you could say a few words if you'd like, but it's okay if you don't, some people.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition, and I'm just doing my job.
Thank you very much.
If I could interrupt for a minute, I'd like to point out, as somebody who sits on the committee, the Employee Recognition Committee, Elise consistently, quarter after quarter, receives one of the most amounts of nominations, every quarter consistently, and we're very proud to have her work with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on in the agenda to item number seven. Item number seven is Call to Public. This is the opportunity for the public to address the Board of Commissioners for three minutes. I would, I'll have a timer that'll go off. It'll beep at three minutes. At about two forty-five, two minutes and forty-five seconds, I will indicate that you have 15 seconds left. I want to go over some of the rules here. They, if you have things to say to the Board of Commissioners, I ask that you direct them to the Chair of the Board, myself. I represent the entire board. It is inappropriate to be calling out individual commissioners. You can call me out, call me anything you want, but I ask you to direct your comments to me. And would also remind everybody that this is a one-way conversation. It is your opportunity to present information to the Board of Commission. It's a monologue. It's not a dialogue. If you wish to speak, you should have filled out a card. So I'm going to ask our clerk, Madam Clerk, to call the names, and then we'll go from there.
Bill Reiber, Genoa Township.
Thank you. I don't think I turned in the first card, so I'm sorry. I'm stepping up people's feet. Thank you, Commissioners, all. I thank you, fellow citizens of Livingston County. I've been here to call the public before, here at the Board of Commissioners meeting, because of my concerns for medical freedom. I know that the Board is considering going forward with recommending the Matt Bowling, which was the Assistant for Medical Director. I know that the Board had considered doing a talent search through an employment agency. There was a $21,000 cost, which nowadays doesn't seem like an awful lot of money, when it's even at a local level in government. I'm reading here an excerpt from the paper here on Saturday here. And I understand that the Personnel Committee voted on three to one to go ahead and approve the resolution to just go ahead and bring Matt Bowling on as the new Health Director. $21,000 isn't an awful lot of money. Okay, I know that the Board, we have been urging the Board in the past to go out and do an exhaustive talent search for a medically qualified person, somebody that's going to support medical freedoms, somebody that's not just going to do what they're told all the time. They're going to do what's right for the citizens of Livingston County. And I trust the Board is wise enough to realize that there are a group of people, myself included, that love our liberties, love our freedom. And if the decision that the Board has made just to go ahead and push through the recommended person, because whether it's a pittance of $21,000, whether it's a pittance of trying to just get it done and move on to the next order of business, I hope the Board of Commissioners realize that elections have consequences. Okay, and if what happens, what happened during COVID happens again, for whatever reason, and we get locked down, and we get fined, and we get our businesses closed, you know, the people that voted just to go ahead and go with the flow, Wes, the people that voted, I'm directing it to you, right? They go with the flow. It's going to be on your head. Okay? We've come here before. We voiced our opinion. We voiced what we wanted to have done. Do spend the $21,000, get the job searched done. As I hear, it was rejected. I'm kind of disappointed. I hope it's not a matter of money. I hope it's not a matter of time, because the retirement was almost two months ago. Okay, so we're long past due. I'm not sure what the reason was not to go ahead and spend the money and do the search, but here we are today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Barbara Tonkovich, Genoa Township.
Hi, Wes. Thank you for letting me speak. Okay, first off, I don't want you to rush to judgment. Only fools rush to judgment. And like Bill said, we don't know the reason why you ended up changing your mind, when originally we had a couple of people here, Wes and another individual, that agreed that we should, we should possibly look. And the people, that's what we want. And yes, there is a cost, whether it's $20,000, $21,000, or whatever it is. There's a cost to government, and compromise is not always a good route, because look where we're at in our nation. So consider that. The people's voices need to be heard and taken into consideration. Most know better what they need, what their children's children need, just like in the school boards, which we all are needing to get involved in. It's hard to trust those making medical decisions for the entire population. Give the people the opportunity to decide for themselves and their families. Give them the science, I've got that in quotes, because science is just a theory. And let them be accountable for what they will do, just as Bill had indicated about being accountable. Why not wait until the midterms at this point, since you've waited this long, and we've got an election coming up in like 43 days? Then maybe a fresh outlook will cure what ails the Board of Commissioners. And have, have a contract for whoever is put into this, just like Kevin McCarthy said back on Friday. He's having individuals sign a contract, a commitment. I believe that we should also have that done by whatever medical director and associate, whoever it is, even the commission, that they should sign a contract that we can help hold them accountable. And lastly... Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Parker, Iasco.
Good evening. I have a feeling I'm here on the wrong topic tonight. But I believe everyone has a copy, but I will address it to Wes. This is with regarding to ARPA funds and the Internet Fiber Ring Resolution. It might have been covered at the Board verbally. I guess I don't know, but it's not apparent in the resolution that came from the Board on moving forward with the study for the fiber ring. So I proposing to the Board an update modification to the current resolution that would allow or require, in fact, the study to be conducted with looking to use any current infrastructure that's existing. So it would read, and again, I'll read it just for the public's sake. Whereas townships within Livingston County have and/or will have varying amounts of fiber installed and in service prior to the completion deadline of this resolution, and at least some of the existing service providers, that is Surf Internet and MySignal specifically so far, have offered to provide Livingston County access to existing fiber to address the Livingston County needs regarding open access fiber for public safety, educational, and municipal use. It shall be noted that Merit and Triple R shall investigate the use of existing fiber wherever and as much as possible, and identify the savings attributed to the prevention of duplicating efforts between the county and the specific townships. And I guess that's it in a nutshell. I mean, the purpose of this is, obviously, the goal should be for us to extend or spread our ARPA funds as far as possible. And redundancy isn't the way to do it. I mean, like, for example, Iasco, we already have two, we have redundancy already. We have two fiber providers in our township through Surf, but there's two sources of fiber data. So I, again, I request that you consider it as an update to your resolution to move forward with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Ringette from Brighton Township.
Hello, Board of Commissioners. Because rebellion, the Bible says, Second Corinthians 3, their minds were blinded. Second Corinthians 4 says, "The God of this world has blinded the minds of the unbelievers." There's a veil. There's a blindness over the minds of the leaders and politicians. There's a, the Bible teaches Jesus Christ. He said, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." Outside of Christ, there's no ultimate truth. Public schools went rogue in the year 21, 22, violating our children's U.S. Constitution rights, violating the rights under the First, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, Fourteenth Amendments, the guarantee clause, the federal statutes and the regulations, civil rights, state laws, federal laws, their due process to a public education, as well as forcing illegal mask mandates and healthy quarantines in Livingston County schools. In April 2021, the state emergency mandate stopped in Michigan. How much further has Livingston County school kids fallen behind in education due to the reckless, illegal, healthy quarantines and mask mandates that the Health Department and school superintendents imposed on our children, with no peer-reviewed replicated studies to back up the reckless actions to show that masks and healthy quarantines work? The Health Department pushed their recommendation mandates, guidelines onto the schools, pushing our children to wear masks and healthy quarantines that have caused suffering, depression, isolation, physical, psychological, sociological harm to our children, imposed pain, suffering, humiliation on students, inhabited their speech, damaged their health. The people who did this to our children need to be held accountable for their actions. There are currently 167 studies mixed with peer-reviewed replicated studies that masks do not, nor do they stop the COVID transmission. A new observational study of the Forgan effect mechanism by which that face mask contributes to COVID-19 fatality rate was published in Medicine in February 2022 by Dr. Forgan. The paper analyzed wearing face masks has caused more than 50% of deaths, 50% higher deaths, forcing people to wear masks compared to no mask mandates. Livingston County Board of Commissioners, our kids should never have to go or repeat the hell they went through with the COVID protocols that were imposed on them through the 21, 22 school year within Livingston County schools. Please hire a true doctor that follows science, peer-reviewed replicated scientific studies, and common sense for any future alleged, alleged outbreaks to be the head of the Livingston County Health Department. Thank you very much.
Dr. Holly Austin, Heartland Township.
Hi, thank you for your time today. I am here as a concerned parent and community member. My priority concern is for my children and the children of Livingston County. The past two and a half years of mandates and dictates for our children have in part been set forth by the Livingston County Health Department at the direction of their Health Director. Of course, our local school boards are also to blame, even though they both choose to shift blame to each other. And now this Board wants to allow this disastrous retired Health Director to have a say in who will be appointed next? This Board is going to pass a resolution to continue the disastrous shenanigans by appointing a non-qualified, non-medical person in this role who aided in trying to destroy local businesses? Everyone who made decisions that affected our children, including the previous Health Director and the local school boards, should be held accountable to the most egregious offenses. And this Board will also be complicit by not properly vetting a candidate worthy of becoming Health Director. The Livingston County Health Department at the direction of their Health Officer harmed the children in Livingston County academically, psychologically, emotionally, and socially. The quarantines, mandatory testing of athletes, masking, isolation strategies, and social distancing strategies caused harm. But most egregious was the continued quid pro quo recommendations for our innocent children to partake in a great experiment of getting COVID shots, which were experimental and still are. Healthy children with almost zero risk of disease were coerced into taking these injections by the people aforementioned. Get the shot. You won't have to quarantine. Get the shot. You won't have to mask. Get the shot. You won't have to isolate. This is what was propagated to the parents and students in this community. I shared with you data a year ago that the harms of these shots outweighed any benefit for healthy children to receive them. My data was spot-on, and new research indicates it is even worse than what I shared with you. As of right now, Denmark has removed all vaccines for children less than 18 years old. As of right now, the UK has banned vaccines, the COVID vaccines, for children under the age of 12. The actions taken to push this injection onto our young population harmed innocent children. Parents regret their decisions right now, but they did it so their children could breathe freely and could attend school, to have their basic liberties in this county, Livingston County. Stop it now. You have an opportunity to try to set right the many wrongs that our children have endured in this community. The opportunity is now, and we, the parents, are watching what each of you do closely. History will not judge you well if you do not take the time and energy to do the right thing in this moment. And we, the parents, will not judge you well either. I do appreciate your time.
Barb Cunn, Brighton Township.
Hello, I'm Barb Cunn, and I suspect all of you have gotten my resume. I sent it. Nathan Bird sent it, and I also have sent a copy on your desk as well. I just wanted to bring to your attention again that I am more than qualified for the Health Officer position. There are three distinct items that you have to meet in order to be qualified. Number C is have a bachelor's degree and eight years of full-time public health experience, five years of which shall have been in the administrative administration of a broad range of public health programs. My credentials and experience satisfy the requirements of subsection C. I have a bachelor's degree in nursing, and I am a registered nurse. I have delivered public health full-time. And for over 20 years, I have advocated and helped families in their homes, in the community, and institutions. And I believe that I am qualified for this. And I just ask you to take a look at my resume and take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Connie Robinson, Heartland Township.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So I'd like everyone just to pretend that the pandemic never happened, okay? There was no COVID, no controversy. So even under those circumstances, I would advocate, advocate for a search, because I don't know any other way. It's really the only way we can be sure we're getting the best candidate for the job of Health Officer. So after I calmed down last week, I found myself reflecting a lot on why we can't agree. And after much thought, I'd like to talk about what I think this voting has been about. I think it's been about friendships, employees, and replacements. Matt Bowling has many friends, and some of his friends are well-respected and longtime members of the community who have spoken very highly on Matt's behalf. And some of these same friends I also respect, and are actually my friends too. So I'm inclined to believe that Matt is a nice guy. For the record, I want you to know I value the loyalty of a good friend. Friendship's important to me. However, this isn't a personality contest. Commissioners should not be voting based on their friendships with Matt, or because of, because one of your good friends really wants you to vote for Matt. This isn't high school, and the most important vote you make should not be based on personal feelings. Next, I would ask you to consider that while it might be easier, your vote should not be about your county employees. We all want a county that runs smoothly with happy employees. No one wants tension or infighting between commissioners and employees. That's never going to be a good thing. However, the commission's first priority and first question should always be, what's best for the community? And that may not always be what's best for an employee. And yes, that could result in some awkwardness and discomfort between commissioners and employees temporarily, but your job isn't to go along to get along. Fear of rocking the boat should never be part, enter even into your decision. Your job should always be about how to best serve the community. And next, your vote should never be based on disappointment or anger towards a community who did not vote the way you hoped. This should never be the case. So I'm urging you tonight to give this a little more time. I'm appealing to your introspection and discernment skills. And after reflection, you have to decide whether your motives, the motives of your vote are truly, truly reflect your obligation to this community. And I'd like to add one more thing. I'd like you to consider postponing this, because half of the members on this commission are lame ducks. Thank you very much.
Connie Conklin, Osceola Township.
Good evening. I just have a couple of comments to make about the experience that I've had with the Health Department, specifically in March of 2020, when we were essentially closed down, despite how it happened that we were closed down, and we remained open as an agency and needed to rely on the Health Department in order to keep individuals that we served in our group homes and various places safe. And so I have to acknowledge the fact that they were essential at that time to help us navigate a time that not any of us knew how to deal with. Fast forward to now, you know, there's a lot more information. There's a lot more data that we have to sift through and decide what's what, and I think there's lessons to be learned. I wouldn't debate any of those things. I think the, the lack of security around how to navigate tough situations, you know, gets the best of all of us. And how do we make decisions? And how do you make decisions with, with information that you have? As county departments, and you know, we do try to lead and collaborate and share information, and we don't always agree, and we try to put all the information together and make the best decisions that we can, while keeping our eye on the ball of serving the residents of this county. There's, there's been a lot of points that, that I totally agree with. I think that this, this has impacted our kids tremendously. We have seen a tremendous amount of more kids coming in for services. And, and so I do think that there's a lot to be learned around decisions that we make just in general, and, and again, lessons to be learned. So we need to plan for the future and learn from the past. I'm not here to tell you what to do, because I don't have all the information that you have. I didn't participate in interviews. I'm not a public health expert. That being said, I know that the indecisiveness around this and the lack of kind of a plan to move forward is not good for the employees that are left at the Health Department, our county operations, or the residents of the county. So I do know that, and I don't know Matt Bowling that, that well. I've, I've worked with him on occasion, and he stepped up when most others would step aside, to be honest. And he's, he has shown leadership and courage, and that should be acknowledged regardless of the decision that's made tonight.
You have 15 seconds.
But I ask you to move forward, because there's a lot of other priorities and needs in our county as well. So I guess my big ask is that we have a plan moving forward and commit to it. Thanks.
Nancy McGuire, Brighton Township.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is my first time speaking. I just wanted to address the issue with the County Health Department Director. I wanted to share my thoughts. I am a retired medical director. I'm not looking for a job. My background is in infectious diseases and internal medicine, for which I've practiced since the early 80s. And I also have had training as a pharmaceutical research, associate research director. So I have understanding of what has happened with the Big Pharma, and I'm not too happy about it, giving and mandating vaccines without adequate safety studies. We have really been through an unprecedented time these past few years. And I hear pain. I hear you all speaking. I see a lot of finger pointing. And I'm sorry that you take the brunt of things, and because you're working in the public eye, it's hard. But unfortunately, this could happen again. I don't say that lightly, but I personally have studied this. It's kind of like a sign of the times.
I've studied emerging infections, diseases, as well as bioweapons since the early 90s. And I know that these pathogens are around in labs. So these pathogens can always be a threat. And we certainly went through a very trying time. We're still going through it as as we speak. So it is my humble opinion to be prudent and to take the time to recruit a medical professional, perhaps even a clinician. It would be invaluable to the doctors in the trenches as well as the patients and family members to help advocate for the patient side of things. Many things in pharmaceutical industry used to in when you worked with the FDA, used to advocate for patients. That changed in the early 90s in which the companies advocated for their stockholders. So we weren't advocating for patients at that time. And it's sad to see what's happened.
You have 15 seconds.
Okay. So those are my thoughts. Consider taking the time to look into this in more detail. And I think that will be time well spent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rachel Pratt, Howell.
I just wanted to say that I would like you guys to also look outside and hire someone. I'm someone who didn't wear a mask, didn't get vaccinated. And I I know that the thing was that if you didn't do that, that means you wanted to kill people and you hated, you know, that you didn't care. But I actually am someone who does care very much about what goes in my body. I work out, I eat healthy. I sat at home for weeks when this first happened and researched before anyone was even wearing masks. I took the time to figure out what to do for my family. I read as much as I could. I didn't want to sit down and just be scared and wait for someone to tell me what to do. I did as much as I could research and I think the scare, that's the hardest thing for me is that I made a decision and then all of a sudden everything got pushed that you had to do it. It was it was just wear a mask, get your shot, and shut your mouth. And it was I I didn't like that I felt like I didn't have a choice that all this information out there and you it was like very one-sided. Everyone was just looking at it. Not everyone, I mean, I I knew people that didn't, but I feel like it came from the Health Department, government, all of that. It was just just one set of things. We didn't like other doctors spoke up, but you were only allowed to listen to the doctors that went in line with that. So the reason I say all that is because I I the Health Department had a big impact on my daughter at school and whether or not she had to wear a mask and stuff. So I just want you to look at someone who looks at all the information and isn't one-sided because we could have saved a lot more lives. I think having doctors and everybody just going in one direction without even doctors who didn't agree still did it because they didn't want to lose their job. And I mean, would say like, well, I they would help people on the side secretly, but at work they were still letting people. I mean, you know, we they didn't they didn't step up and save people when they could have even at work. So I just think that you should pick someone from the outside and not stick with the same people who helped make such a mess of everything. And I would hope that they would be open to looking at all information. I mean, I went down the natural route like we did the vitamins.
You have 15 seconds.
And we're still doing okay. And and all of that stuff was it keeps coming out stronger that it was the way to go, so.
Joni Conum, Oceola.
Good evening, commissioners. I did redact some. A month ago, I came before this board with a request that you consider an individual with a medical degree or a medical background to serve as our new health director slash medical director. Recently, it has become apparent that this isn't the priority of several commissioners of this board, protecting the citizens, businesses, and children of Livingston County. By your consideration of employing Matt Bowling by default as a new health director, who, to my knowledge, does not hold a medical degree, and neither did Diane McCormick. This is a very serious position that you should not be taking lightly or rubber stamp. We we can do the right by citizens to place a medically knowledgeable individual in the office capable of making sound, rational decisions based on medical knowledge to protect this county and not offer this position to an individual who does not qualify for a health director position. When I hear health director, I hear a medical health director. Thank you.
Good evening.
Tommy Conum from
Yeah, good, good evening, everyone. Recently, as of May 3, Wayne County did a similar search that I don't think you guys decided to do, but they did. Obviously, Wayne County's a little bit more diverse and a little bit more larger community than Livingston County. But Melita Jordan was announced as the Director of Department of Health and Human Services and Veteran Services. I will just basically paraphrase, but Wayne County's demands of her, she's a Department of Health, Human, and Veteran Services, administers a broad range of services, including public health, juvenile justice, jail, medical services, veterans, and the medical examiner office. I think that's kind of key here. I won't go into her credentials because she has quite extensive background. And but she she has the desired history. And one of the examiners said her experience is both as a frontline practitioner and as an administrator uniquely positions her to oversee and direct the comprehensive array of health and human services provided by this department or that is needed by this department in this critical time. I look forward to working with her not only to safely end the pandemic in Wayne County, but to improve access to care and health equity for our residents moving forward. And to paraphrase, we don't know what that moving forward is going to be, but we suspect something else is on the horizon. The health of our residents is critical to our overall health and wellness of our community. But this is kind of one of the things here that really kind of jumps out at me is and I wanted to really point this out was that as a medical professional, she can bring insight into the next step of developing the county and what their medical plans are. We see ourselves in the here and now. We don't know necessarily what six months, a year, five years down the road might might plan for the County Health Department, what needs they're going to have. But I believe a medical director would have the insight to be able to provide that direction to our staff and to help move the county forward, not just in a pandemic situation, but with a communal support for whatever our county needs from a administrative as well as a healthcare position. And I do realize if we do have some oversight with the medical examiner's office, now this one person may be able to cover both positions because of their experience. Thank you.
Stacy Farrell, Oceola Township.
Back in the spring, I came before you all with a resolution regarding mental health awareness, a topic that every member of this board pretends to care about, a topic that not one of you responded to, not one. Yet a resident was added to the agenda to rehash the same story about how detrimental the pandemic was for her and her kids. And let me remind you that the same courtesy wasn't given to our elected Congresswoman, which I'm grateful that members of this board, new veteran, use the formal process of this organization to prevent creating a terrible precedent for cronyistic preferential treatment of some residents over others. Something that could help these folks is greater access to mental wellness resources. Disorders created or exacerbated by pandemic stressors, including anxiety, depression, and resultant behaviors and learning loss seem to be something that is not being worked on by this body. Not only that, but Chairman Nakagiri had the audacity to post a libelist story titled "Heartland promotes sex change in young children." That is a lie. At no time ever has the simple recitation of a book in a non-school setting ever resulted in a child's sex change. Much like reading Maya Angelou will not turn you into a black poet, or the Diary of Anne Frank will turn you Jewish, or the reading of the Bible will make you Christian. Not only does Chairman Nakagiri create and promote these lies that are attempting to tear this community apart, but you specifically targeted school counselors as if they grow on trees. Just so you're all aware, the state of Michigan, in the state of Michigan, there is one school counselor for every 691 students. And you want to target them? You're so caught up in your identity politics that you don't consider for one second the effect of your lies have on this community. Why can't you focus on the real issues of this community? Your lies and outrage unnecessarily increase the divide in this community. We need more counselors, not for you to chase them away. We need more resources for the members of this community experiencing stress, not less. I'm asking for your immediate resignation, removal of that libelist post, and a public apology to those you defamed. If you do not resign, then I strongly urge the rest of this board to do their duty to maintain the highest ethical standards of this organization and immediately censure Chairman Nakagiri. This circus has to stop and only you guys can do that. Thank you.
Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
I read that at the last personnel meeting, there was a vote three to one to move our current interim health director to become the health director. The one person, the three, the four, I didn't think that was a good idea. In order to keep things moving, he supported the resolution. Now, this is a quote from WHMI talking about one of the other members of the Health Committee or the Personnel Committee, I'm sorry. So this person believed that they were doing the wrong thing. They believed with one of the commissioners on the Personnel Committee. But just to keep things moving, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, do the right thing or just keep things moving. We're going to push it forward. Two weeks ago, I was here and there was a lady that spent quite a bit of time working on a presentation. And I understand that it was moved from the agenda because there wasn't wasn't the need for the spend the time. Again, why do the right thing? We can just do what's quick and easy. Everybody sitting behind me is busy. They have managed to show up today to talk to you. They're not taking the quick and easy route. They believe in what they're coming here to tell you. And they want you to do the same thing. They want you to do the right thing. And that what is quick and easy. Thank you.
Anne Marie Clark, Deerfield Township.
Good evening, everyone. I'm asking you not to appoint Matt. Matt was willingly involved in investigating small businesses for compliance to the state's COVID mandates and reporting them to the state, which could possibly lead to these small businesses being fined and or losing their licenses to operate. He was also a part of running the disastrous quarantine exclusion policy that deprived healthy children of many days of education if they were deemed a close contact of someone with COVID. This resulted in school-aged children suffering mental, emotional, social, and academic consequences. So again, I'm asking the board not to appoint Matt. Remember that he harmed the restaurants, the children's learning. People's businesses were closed down. We don't want our taxpayer dollars going to someone that will shut down our economy, especially when we're on the brink of recession. We need a person who's going to help the citizens, not harm them, and that has the proper qualifications. So to the commissioners, you either get to be the tyrant or the heroes. The people do not want Matt. Please do not sell us out.
Denise Watts, Pinkney.
Could you, I would ask people if, you know, I know you like to applause. And I'm not here to say you can't applaud, but I'd like to hear the name and the township of the person that's speaking. So if you would hold your applause, I would really appreciate it. What was the name?
Denise Watts, Pinkney.
Well, I agree with just about everything everyone has set up here. So why would you appoint Matt when he's got put in there just because someone else quit or retired, whatever? I'm not sure why. I mean, none of us can know all you people and everything everybody does. I would like to see somebody in here that knows true health, mother nature health, not just some medical mafia person that is pushing drugs and doesn't really understand how the body works. Bodies, you know, meant to heal itself. And we've all been through so much stuff here in the last couple, two and a half years. And we all, most of us that are awake know it was a plandemic. It was all to make us sick, was all to feed the medical mafia, kill us, make the kids sick, control us. And so why wouldn't you want to get someone in here that really knows true health? And and not just appoint somebody because it's easier because, you know, he took over, which I'm, you know, I don't know the man, but we need change. We need somebody running the Health Department that really knows what's what's really the truth and what's going on. We all, we do, we're awake back here.
Yep.
You know, we're all awake and we want change. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
Nicole Colors, Brighton.
Good evening, commissioners. Our children are hurting. For two years, they were told that their friends, their school, their parents, and their entire world was contaminated. And if they were to catch these deadly germs, they would most certainly kill grandma and grandpa. Sounds ridiculous now, doesn't it? We wonder why our children's mental health is in crisis. That's why our kids are in mental crisis. Our kids have paid the price of predatory health departments and an inept governor, both who made certain that children would suffer the most cruel punishments. Ask any educator what the worst consequence of COVID restrictions were. They will unanimously say behavior. Student behavior has seen the most negative Student behavior has seen the most negative impact out of anything. Unnecessary and illegal quarantines of healthy kids taught our children that school isn't important, while the masks took away their identity and all sense of accountability. It's time to stop preying on our kids. Please search for a qualified health director who will not just continue the predatory practices of the last few years. And just for a final thought, $21,000 is about a dollar per student. Our kids are worth it. Thank you.
If you, as you call up the next person, if you could say the person's following, and then maybe they can get ready to go and then.
Glenn Gogaleski from Hartland, and then Jane Clark from Hamburg.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't really have anything prepared, so this ought to be pretty entertaining for all of you. I just am here to, to speak for countless numbers of citizens who really want you to reconsider your idea of simply hiring somebody to fill a spot as a chief health officer. Nothing in the last two and a half years could possibly be more demonstrative of why we need a qualified chief health officer. I cannot imagine, after what we've gone through, what we've done to our children, what we've done to businesses, that you wouldn't take the time to search for someone that is well-credentialed. I, I understand somebody may have a lot of experience working under someone from the past. That's great. This deals with health. This person has an awful lot of influence, has an awful lot of power, as you can tell from all the decisions that were made with school boards when, when COVID was at its peak. So please, take your time. Do a search. Anything less is going to be viewed by a number of citizens in this county as nothing more than either gross negligence or dereliction of duty. On another note, I would like to say to Mr. Nakagiri, you have absolutely nothing to apologize for. And personally, I feel that any school official that would create a video encouraging gender dysphoria and allowing kids to think that they actually have a choice in their gender is criminal. And I have a real problem with those people being involved in the school system. So you have nothing to apologize for. Thank you.
Jane Clark, followed by Linda Ensley.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm speaking regarding the appointment of the public health officer. I am asking for your due diligence in this matter. It is the least that you can do. The position of the public health officer is a far too important one. There must be an external posting and a thorough search for the right candidate, preferably one with a medical background. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Ensley, Hamburg Township, followed by Julie Valdez from Howell.
Good evening. I'm not in favor of hiring Matt Bowling without posting this position in order to find the very best candidate. In the last two years, we've watched government agencies violate and trample on the rights of citizens. In our own county, business owners were prohibited from operating their businesses, and the parents were denied the right to decide what was best for their own children. Aside from this, there was a lack of clarity about who was actually making decisions about all of the COVID restrictions and all the rules that we had in our schools, the school boards or the health department. It was very unclear. If Matt Bowling was part of ignoring the individual rights and freedoms of citizens and involved in all of this confusion, I encourage you to post this position and fill it with someone who understands that our rights were not given to us by the government, and government must never again take them away.
Julie Valdez, Howell, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good evening. I'll just be quick. I, I didn't come prepared, but I'm here to speak for all the kids and the parents and the businesses and all of us who know there was a plandemic. I think you're aware of it as well, but I guess the question is why? Why would we not be doing our due diligence in looking for the right candidate? We have one in the room who has qualifications, a medical background. There's qualifications on, on there that he, Matt's not meeting any of those. So I think everyone needs to maybe sit back and wonder why they're making that decision. A friend, like we've already said, I don't know, easy $21,000 for all the money you guys have taken is a drop in the bucket, I think we all know. I think you need to do the right thing. The right thing would be to look for the right person who's not going to put us, our kids, all these little kids that have been truly affected by all this, back in the same position they've been in. It's truly unfair. This is their world. It's time for them to have a life, and you're not going to allow that if you put someone in there that's going to do the same exact thing as Diane McCormick did, because he was part of it. And she, she admitted that she wasn't the person making all those decisions and putting it back at the school boards. And they played back and forth, and that's going to happen again, and that's truly unfair to these kids. Thank you.
Jennifer Smith, Genoa Township, followed by Mike Bambus.
Hey, Board. Not one person who has spoken out to ask for an exhaustive search for a new health director has come forward because we're on a witch hunt for Mr. Bowling. We're on a witch hunt for truth and transparency. We do not agree with taking the advice of a person who did not make decisions in the best interest of children in our county. The people who have been vocal about this situation are coming to you with affiliation and concern because they are your constituents, whether you like it or not, or whether you agree with them. We all elected you, or your friends up there appointed you, because they saw something within you to be a leader and a steward of our county. So please do that. You are the stewards of our county. The county health director during the pandemic failed our children during the pandemic and after. Unwarranted quarantines, unnecessary house arrest, illegally denying kids access to schools, and I'm just going to throw my own personal situation in there for the 115th time, 40 freaking one days of school my 10-year-old missed, 41 consecutive days. It's not able to be made up. This can't happen again. I'm not coming to you as an activist. I'm not coming to you because I don't like some of you. I'm coming up here to you as a parent. And I think it's been lost. The art of us coming as parents have been lost. As stated at the last meeting, McCormick herself agreed she did not have only children in mind when making decisions regarding the quarantines in the schools. In fact, she said they were not her priority. So I leave you with this question, not what are you going to do with the health director's position, but rather, what are you going to do for the children of Livingston County to ensure that that madness is not ever going to happen again? The kids deserve a medical professional. The kids deserve a second look at a qualified candidate. The kids deserve better than what has been afforded to all of us. Cheap shots, condemnation, and eye rolls. Disgusting behavior. The kids are the future, and as such, as leaders of this county, you owe the kids the best that can be provided. And what happened last week was weak and not the best that could be provided. So please, get it together, stop kicking the can down the road, and do something for these kids before something else pops off, like monkeypox, jellybeanpox, or whatever else, and then we're right back in the same situation. Thank you.
Mike Bambus of Michigan, followed by Tyler of Howell Township.
Good evening, Board. As a business owner of this community for over 30, 35 years, I'm appalled by a lot of things. In August of 2020, I received a $500 citation from the Michigan State Police for refusing to wear a mask. I beat them in court on December 9th of 2020. Now, with that said, there are laws that you are bound to follow. We have a thing called the Constitution. You are bound to it. U.S. Supreme Court ruled in James v. Boise, 2016, that all state courts, including state Supreme Courts, are bound by U.S. Supreme Court rulings. That includes you as well as lower-ranking board members. Under state law, MCL 750.20201 through 203, everybody has the right to refuse medical treatment and medical advice. Acts of intimidation and coercion cannot be used against one, nor can they be found civilly or criminally liable for making such a choice. You need to choose wisely. I don't like coming to these things generally, and other boards who have seen me walk in, generally, I don't show up to these things unless somebody's screwing up. I don't want to have to come back. I want you to pay very close attention, because I've heard a lot of these parents and people here talking about the children being abused. You need to choose wisely. None of you have a medical license or a medical degree, which means you're practicing medicine without a license. That's a felony. Under MCL 750.136, Subpart B2, you are punishable for life in prison for child abuse, for mentally or physically harming a child. You better read the laws of the state of Michigan. Shutting down, locking down businesses and the schools will no longer be tolerated. Business as usual is over. It will not be tolerated. Depriving people of their constitutional rights is a violation of Title 18, Sections 242. Deprivation of constitutional rights will, cannot be done by a public official. And as a board, and you take responsibility for the entire board, now we have a violation of Title 18, 241, conspiracy deprive rights. And each one of you, as such, will be held not only criminally but civilly liable under 42 U.S.C., Section 1983. I suggest whoever you choose, and I endorse no one because I don't think anybody's qualified. I've yet to see anybody qualified to sit in any position in this county, in any position, way right up to the courts. And I've disqualified judges for ethic violations. So I'm sure if you ask around, my name is going to pop up quite often.
You have 15 seconds.
All I'm going to say is this, the people sitting behind me are your employers. You are the employee. I am your employer. You might want to listen to them and what they want. They're telling you, the employee, what they want you to do. You might want to consider doing so, because if I have to come back, I will enforce MCL 764.16 and institute citizens' arrests.
The last card I have is Tyler, Tyler, I'll let you pronounce your last name, please, from Howell Township.
Davatella. All right. I haven't attended all the recent meetings on the health director topic, but I've heard and seen some updates, and it seems there's been a lot of subjective argument and opinions of who are, who may not be qualified or the best candidate and, you know, and who's recommending Matt or not. And, you know, in some ways, that could be viewed as a popularity contest. And I think the, the standard way that institutions and corporations work through that is by conducting a candidate search and interview process. That is the, just the basic default process that occurs with almost every hiring decision that is made. And to avoid that process is a, a special exception that would require a, you know, a detailed explanation or rationale for why that process is not being carried out to find the best candidate. And, you know, the financial cost of it, you know, $21,000, I think, is, is trivial, you know, a health officer, you know, just national average, maybe somewhere in $100,000 salary range. And hopefully, they're employed here for a long time, you know, 10 years is a million dollars. So I think $21,000 is a pretty reasonable fee to make sure that million dollars is well-spent. And, you know, important decisions should always, when possible, be based on data, or at least influenced by data. And I think hiring decisions, you know, typically use the candidate search and interview process as a way to gather data so that the data can be presented and you can have transparency and trust and community support for the hiring decision that is made. So I encourage you to go ahead to conduct the candidate search and interview process. And I think that is the best way forward and the best way to garner community support and buy-in from everybody and try to get through all of the arguing and opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further cards.
So, um, there are no more cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the Call the Public here, and then we'll move to Call the Public on Zoom. I would, I'm going to mention to everybody on Zoom, if you want to speak at Call the Public, you need to raise your hand, and you need to raise your hand now so that, because I'm going to only call on people that have their hands raised as of now, and the last person that would be called right now is Kathleen's iPhone. So I'll, I'll wait just a few here, a few seconds, and please raise your hand on the, if you want to speak at Call the Public on Zoom. With that being said, Jared, if you would provide us your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jared Alamatt, and I'm from Genoa Township. So, um, as the last speaker mentioned, it's unheard of to not have a key director or executive level job that you just hand out to someone without going through an exhaustive search or interview. I mean, in most companies, I work for a Fortune 10 company, we're required to interview for roles, even at much lower levels. And that's because you want to get the most qualified candidate. You want to get the best possible person. If you add to that the fact that COVID was so poorly handled by the previous medical director, and her chief lieutenant, whom you want to hire, was responsible for enforcing mask mandates, quarantine, shutting down businesses, fining businesses, I mean, this kind of seems like a no-brainer. Um, and he just doesn't, he doesn't have the qualifications to really duke it out and engage in, you know, intellectual, you know, warfare with the fascists that are running our state. So I'm encouraging you to please think this through and do an exhaustive search, especially in light of what happened during COVID. Um, I would encourage you to not only look at somebody with a clinical background, but look at somebody with a backbone who is willing to stand up for the rights of the people. You need to hire somebody that understands our Constitution, understands our medical freedoms, our health freedoms. It will not infringe on those. And that is, that'll be willing to, you know, stand up against, you know, the state or whomever they need to in order to protect the rights and interests of our citizens.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, it, this is an IQ test. So hopefully, hopefully you pass.
Next up will be Janine Ayer. If you state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, this is Janine Ayer, Genoa Township. So I'm the 23rd person to speak on the health officer issue against the current resolution to simply hire Matt Bowling. I don't know how many emails were sent to you. I would believe that that would be overwhelmingly in agreement with I would believe that that would be overwhelmingly in agreement with the others who have spoken so far that simply hiring Matt Bowling is not doing your due diligence. It's actually a dereliction of duty to neglect to do a proper search. So if you believe in representative government, then this board should overwhelmingly vote to amend this resolution back to what Commissioner Houserman proposed last month. The amendment should, at the very least, direct human resources to post the health officer position for thirty days and consider candidates like the fine woman who is in the audience there, who has submitted her, her application. And the, an amendment should preferably direct human resources to conduct an exterior or outside search for a qualified candidate. I really would urge you to do, to make this kind of amendment, especially in light of equal opportunity employment policies of the county, simply just to hire Matt Bowling and deny others like, like Barbara in the audience, would basically discriminate against her. And I fear that that may be a situation for the county. So I would urge you to amend this resolution to hire Matt Bowling, to, to not do that and instead allow others to apply and preferably to do it next year's search for the most qualified candidate. I'm sure that they are out there, and thank you for your time.
Uh, next up will be Lisa R. If you state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Lisa Rose Marnevett, Chamber Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, I want to just apologize for the email that went out to the commissioners late last week. I directed it at all of the commissioners and really needed, should have only been directed at one or two of the commissioners. And so I do want to just acknowledge the fact that this is a highly-charged, passionate topic, and some of us get very passionate. And I just want to say that it, as everyone else has said, we really need to look for someone that not only has the clinical background, but also knows about freedom in our rights, because we will not have them trampled on again. Just as a word of caution, when it comes to the next medical director, we will not have our rights trampled on ever again. We will not consent to masking, quarantining, closing of businesses, or forced vaccinations. If I had children in school still during this pandemic, I would be suing the Health Department, school boards, and businesses for deprivation of rights under the color of law, section 242, title 18. Makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or the laws of the United States. Lastly, I, I want, I find it really interesting that we have Livingston County press on Zoom, when, you know, they pick and choose when they come. But I probably, I'm assuming that the person that attacked Wes gave a phone call and said, hey, you're going to have to get this in the paper. I just want to support Wes 100%. I think he does a great job as chairing the board. I agree with what's going on in the schools and what's in the libraries. And you can't make blanket statements that somebody won't become a Christian by reading the Bible or a poet by reading, I can't remember whose ever book. But we're talking about young children's minds that are being formed, and we can't have them reading junk. And if, if you want your kid to read junk, let them read junk. Let them read slut, slut, slimy, slutty books that are in our libraries. But don't, don't attack people who don't want their kids reading that, and they do not want that type of information at their hands in the school. Thanks again for your service, and we're hoping that you guys make the right decision tonight.
Thank you. Um, next up is Judy Dobbinmeyer. If you'd state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Judy Dobbinmeyer, and I live in Genoa Township. And good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I wanted to change the subject a little bit, even though this is obviously something that is very riveting. But also on the agenda tonight is the issue of county compensation for the county commissioners. And I wanted to say that I really don't believe that, that you all deserve a raise because of the way you've been conducting county business the last two years, because you don't really do county business. You do culture wars. And I think you would better serve our citizens if you would focus on county business. As a citizen also, I think that we deserve more information about your total compensation. The resolution sort of suggests that your salary is the sum total of it, but you also receive full healthcare benefits, dental insurance, and other benefits. And I think in the interest of transparency, you should tell the citizens what that total cost is as well and itemize all the benefits that you also receive so that people can think about whether they're getting their money's worth out of their county board at this time. So as you move on to that resolution tonight, I hope you'll remember that I don't think you deserve a raise and that the citizens deserve to know the full cost of what they are paying for your services. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lisa, if you state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elisa Davis. I live in the city of Brighton. And I just want to start out by saying, Commissioner Nakagiri, I support you 150%. You are the one commissioner that keeps the people in the forefront all the time. God bless you for doing that. I support everything that you're doing, and thank you. Now, um, to all of the commissioners, you have been elected as the voice of your constituents. And if you cannot hear us by now, you really should not be there. This is, Wes is a perfect role model for all of you. Tonight, we've heard from a doctor, a qualified applicant, a health director, countless citizens, and so lucky, we got to hear from Mike Bambus as well. Take heed to what he said. I've heard reference to the good old boys' club, constitution violations, larger counties doing exhaustive searches, which are more expensive for them. The apathetic board, the apathetic attitude of the majority of the board, that Matt was a tattletale of small businesses. Asking for, many have been asking for a change in a positive direction. The wrongdoings of the Health Department to our children, gross negligence, overwhelm, an overwhelming cry for a qualified director. And then the negligence and the disaster from the previous health director of, team of Diane and Matt. Here's my thing. In past board meetings, I've watched you, and most of you all supported this exhaustive search. What concerns me is after you talk the talk, why don't you walk the walk with your vote? You say one thing, and then you do another. So this is the one position you guys get a say in, and y'all are going to shirk your responsibilities. Laws have been cited supporting this negligence. Class action lawsuits are happening all over the United States now. And they're going after people who are negligent. It doesn't matter if you're a health director or a nurse or a county commissioner.
You have fifteen seconds.
And in closing, good choices get good results. Dirty money makes for dirty people. Choose wisely. Stay clean, because we're watching. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up is Lori Cowan. Lori, if you would state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township, and this will be pretty brief, and it's also off the subject. But I just wanted to show my support for Joe Parker's comments tonight for how the ARPA funds are being spent for broadband and his amendment for the resolution, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up will be S. iPhone. If you state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. This is Susan Tapaleski. Actually, tonight, my husband Jeff will be speaking.
We're from Green Oak Township. First off, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for serving the public. I have two key points to make. Number one, given the very sensitive and passionate nature of the health director position issue, I would, a conflict of interest would want to be avoided by everyone involved. Given the overwhelming support to do a search, to interview, to see what candidates are available, maybe Matt is the best candidate. Let's just check and see. But to push it across the finish line without doing any due diligence, one might consider a conflict of interest might be present. Number two, and a little bit, it's related, but it's a different tangent related to the ongoing COVID challenge that we've all been facing in our, our community. That if there's a mass casualty event that happens in the future, whether it's an extension of this COVID plandemic, perhaps related to Charles Lieber's patent, related to 5G interacting in nanotubes included in the vaccines, or something completely else, do we have a plan of where the bodies would go? If we don't, it might be wise to develop a plan, and we hope and pray that we never, ever have to use that plan. But it would be good to at least have a plan prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be GoGo's Three. If you provide your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Janine Bogaleski. I'm from Heartland Township, and thank you very much for letting me speak this evening. My question being to all of you commissioners here, you must listen to your constituents, please. You've had, what, thirty-five people here speaking today about the situation with the director? I think you need to do your due diligence and do a, do a search for this person. I have spoken before at past meetings as well regarding this. I don't understand why a library can do a search for a candidate for a library position, and you cannot do a search for a position that affects our entire county and spend as little as $21,000? That's a drop in a bucket. I'm also a person that worked through the whole situation with the pandemic, working with mass students, seeing the, the horrible situations that happen, seeing where our students are today, failing tests, being without school for forty-one days for some of these students. You must listen to your constituents, please. Do your due diligence and hire someone that's qualified to make these decisions. These decisions affect thousands of kids in this district. Again, you have been elected. Do your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up will be Danielle Anjo. Danielle, if you state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Danielle Anjo, and my township is Handy. And I guess there, I feel like there's a point that hasn't been brought up, and Matt already holds a position within the county. To my knowledge, he's in the Environmental Services portion. And so if you allow him to take over the health director position, aren't you going to have to post his position as well? Don't you have to do a search to find someone to replace him? So how does this make sense? Is there any common sense on the board? Um, so I'm asking you, because one way or the other, you're going to have to find somebody. And this isn't about, just like Connie Robinson said, this isn't about promoting our friends. I know you want to see your friends have the things that they want. Why would he want a position that nobody wants him in? It, it boggles my mind. Every person that's come on here has said, we don't want him, or we want to find all the best candidates and then go from there. Why are you not listening? It's very simple. You're going to have to find, uh, you're going to have to post a job, no matter if it's the director job, the health director, or Matt's current job. You're going to have to. So it makes no sense. You make absolutely no sense. And we're asking you to do this, and not only are we asking you to do this, we're telling you to do this. I don't know what job you've ever had that you don't listen to your boss and don't get fired. Just like Mike said, we are your boss. I'm not sure if you don't know how that works, but when you're elected by people, those people are now your boss, and we are telling you that we want to search for the health director position. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three more. Kathleen's iPhone. Kathleen, if you give us your, or state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kathleen Davatella. I'm from Howell Township. Um, good evening. I say the following with complete respect for each individual commissioner. With the very real and valid experiences parents and businesses have felt over the past two years of government overreach, yes, there's never been orders written by Mrs. McCormick based on quarantine, masking, et cetera. As the FOIA documents that Mrs. Pennola has obtained and shared with you, there was communication between the schools and the Health Department and notices sent by the Health Department to families that they had no other choice but to quarantine their healthy child and deny them their education. The pushback from parents and business owners about filling the health director role is because this is personal to us. Personal when we have been living through the previous health director's orders to thousands of families to keep their healthy children home from school and deny them their education. I realize that Mr. Bowling has held multiple positions in the Health Department, and with that experience, has qualifications for segments of the health director position. With the sting that we're feeling from the previous director's way of running the department regarding quarantine healthy individuals, I would like to see a fresh face in the director's role that will, above all, put personal healthcare decisions in the hands of the individual and the family, especially when Washington and the media are pushing fear over monkeypox and new COVID variants. Our country was founded upon individual freedom. We're not a perfect country, but we've been a phenomenal force for good in the world. This to us is a freedom issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is, looks like Karen Basista. If Karen, if you state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Karen Basista, and I'm from Green Oak Township, and I've been here for like thirty-six-plus years. I'm a registered nurse and have been for like fifty-plus years, and I have twenty-six years of ICU and CCU experience. It is imperative that you choose a person with a medical background for the Livingston County Health Department Director. In the medical field, you have book learning and knowledge and practical learning and knowledge. And only a medical person knows that kind of learning. A non-person, a non-medical person would not know either or be able to help anyone. In a medical situation, time is of the essence. No time to look things up. I'm appalled that you would even consider a non-medical person. I would not trust a non-medical person for myself or for my family. I do not know Matt at all, but from what I've heard tonight, I think Matt is probably one of the people that's part of the problem. I ask you to do your due diligence and search for the right person. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last person is iPhone. If you state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. This is Anna Nami. I am in Genoa Township. So first, I did want to say, thanks for taking the opportunity to listen to me. I'm a parent of three and having the opportunity to speak, really, and hear what everybody else is saying, it's, it's going to be a lot of resonating with what other people have said tonight. I've been to other board meetings, but it's been a while. But when I heard that the commissioners would be appointed- But when I heard that the commissioners would be appointing a replacement for Diane and that the resolution called for outright hiring of Matt, I was pretty disappointed and alarmed. Um, you know, a lot of people have touched on the fact that as commissioners, you have a job to serve your people and your people are speaking. Um, and we owe it to our children to actually search for someone who's well-qualified. The last two years, if it showed us anything, it was that Michigan law vests tremendous power in this position, including vast emergency powers. Um, I know I don't speak for myself when I say I don't want to repeat of how things were handled under McCormick, um, who, to my knowledge, doesn't have a medical degree. Um, the issues and the way that the policies were put in place were, it was a complete disaster. Yeah, businesses were harmed, you know, places went out of business, but it's fair and very easy to say that children endured the most damage and the most abuse from these policies. And their rights were taken away. To not be able to participate in the school and education is just wrong. So, y- you know, I'm just here to say that this position is too important to forego a formal, a formal hiring process. And it doesn't seem like that difficult of a task to do a formal hiring process. I just wanted to be very clear that I'm here to object to the outright hiring of anybody to the position, including Matt. You know, we need to do better. I want better for my children. I want better for this community. And I want someone who's got the qualifications in the background that can make decisions that not only are in the best interests of our health, but that also respect the rights that we have. So thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to seeing you all follow what you're hearing tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, close the call to public and remind citizens that there's a second call to public at the end of the meeting. Um, that one is, uh, two minutes in duration. So item number eight on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Uh, we have minutes, um, dated September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. We have minutes from a work session dated, uh, September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. I'm looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion to approve, Griffiths?
Support, Zajek.
Motion by Commissioner Griffiths, support by Commissioner Zajek. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Um, item number nine, uh, tabled items from previous meetings. Uh, uh, Administrator Bird wanted to comment.
Yeah, I, I don't like, uh, items staying on the table week after week after week, but I'm gonna ask that you take no action on this tonight. Um, our legal counsel has revised the agreement, um, based on concerns that were shared earlier this month at FAM. We just haven't got the complete document back yet from, uh, the other, uh, council. So don't ask you to vote on a resolution until you've had a chance to look at all the documents. We should have them in hand, uh, by the next board meeting. And so if you're agreeable to it, I would prefer that you keep this on the table for two more weeks.
So is there anybody that wants to take it off the table? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, item number ten is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Helzerman.
Motion by Commissioner Helzerman, support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Item number eleven, our reports, this opportunity for commissioners to share information with their colleagues. Are there any reports from commissioners? Commissioner Plank?
I had an opportunity to stop by, uh, Community Callus Open House in Howell this past Friday to see the progress on, on their latest project. As some of you may know, they are currently renovating the Crest Motel on Grand River in Howell. Community Callus is an organization that supports seniors, veterans, homeless and other low-income people by funding and developing quality affordable housing. It was great to see different partners in the community coming together for this great cause, including Joe Hammond, the project manager. Uh, he told me that he anticipates the project to be completed by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Helzerman?
I just have a comment. Uh, there's several, um, proposals, uh, on the ballot. Uh, proposals two and three in particular. I don't have any comments tonight on those, but I probably will, uh, in a, at a future meeting. But I just encourage all of us and all, all of the community in large to know what's going on and vote. Well, vote no on two and three. That's my recommendation. And, you know, I, I, I don't have an opinion on the other one yet, so. Uh, but I'm definitely a no on two and three, so.
Commissioner Smith?
So in the city of Brighton, there is a, uh, a ballot initiative as well to allow for, um, at least two marijuana dispensaries, recreational dispensaries. This could, this could dramatically change the look, feel, and type of city, uh, that Brighton is. And, uh, when I say at least two, the cities that have attempted to limit, uh, dispensaries, once they're approved in the past, have been forced into court and courts have forced it to open up to even more, so. I, I beg you to look and see what kind of city you really want to have in the city of Brighton if you're a resident. Secondly, uh, as to proposal three on the statewide, ballot, this is, this is a constitutional amendment. This is something that really changes the face of the state. This is an, this is an initiative that is probably the most extreme proposal in the country. Let me paraphrase, paraphrase a few words here. Based on the wording of this amendment, not only does this would enshrine abortion up to and including the day of birth, it also eliminates dozens of Michigan laws that presently regulate it, including parental consent. I, I urge you, I beg you, please, please consider, uh, voting no on this because, uh, it, it completely changes the face of the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I wanna, um, just give a short statement, uh, addressing something that was said earlier. I started a, um, Substack page. It's, uh, if people want to read what I wrote about, um, the, uh, reading of I Am Jazz, which is the, uh, it's, it's a book that is, uh, promotes, uh, transgenderism to children ages four to eight years old. That's the target audience, four to eight years old. Um, the, um, so the, um, you can go to my Substack page, nakagiri.substack.com and read what I wrote. Everything I wrote was, uh, factual. There's no, uh, opinions in there. It was a reading of I Am Jazz. Uh, there were two Heartland uh, school counselors that were participating in this reading. Amongst others, there were others, but the, uh, Heartland was well represented with two. Uh, if you've seen, maybe perhaps you've seen it, it also had Congresswoman Slotkin in there as a, uh, reading. I strongly believe this is promoting transgenderism. I strongly believe that educators should be promoting ABCs. Uh, and, um, staying, uh, anyway, I would encourage you to read what I, I read because it is, um, significantly different than how it was characterized, um, earlier this evening. So with that being said, I'm going to, unless there's any other reports, I'm gonna close reports and move on to item twelve, in the, um, agenda. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna have to, uh, you know, when we a- asked to approve the agenda, I had forgot to mention that there were two additions that, um, that were put forward by the, um, courts. Um, you had gotten hard copies of that. And these had to do with approving some grants that were awarded. Uh, and there's a time constraint here that if we don't approve them, um, before the first of October, then we're, the, the state of Michigan is not gonna approve the grant funding. These are grants that have been sought and approved in the past. Um, Commissioner, a normal, the normal process would have, it would have gone in front of the courts and Public Safety, uh, committee, uh, in conversation with Commissioner Drake, uh, Chair of the Committee and myself. We agreed to put it on the agenda, but I forgot to get a motion to,
and my original motion to include these, uh, and whichever numbers that you want to assign to them.
Is there support? Um, so, uh, we have a motion for the amended agenda, uh, by Commissioner Helzerman, support by, uh, Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? We have an amended agenda. Aye.
Point of order?
Yes.
Pursuant to our bylaws as commissioners, when we get this type, type of document at a commission meeting, any one of us can ask for a five-minute recess so we can all read it. I would ask for a five-minute recess right now so we all can read them.
We, um, without objection, um, so we'll go by the clock on the wall. So we'll take a recess till, um, the big hand gets on the ten.
Thank you for the five minutes.
All right, let's, um, we'll get started again. Um, we're on item twelve. We're on resolutions for consideration. The first resolution under consideration is twenty-twenty-two dash zero-nine dash one forty-four. Uh, it's resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
So move, Griffiths.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffiths, support by Commissioner Helzerman. Uh, this was talked about in committee. Um, but are there any further questions, follow-up comments from anybody? Seeing none. All those in.
Okay, I, I have, I have some comment if I could. Uh, this appointment, I just want to remind my college that this appointment last time didn't go very smoothly. And this appointment to the planning commission was the reason why we changed our policy. Okay? And basically tonight, we are, nobody, um, instituted the policy in this case. So basically,
I, in my mind, we're nickeling and diming it. Anyways, that's my, that's my amendment. I think that, you know, and this is, I'm doing this because it was about half of the amount that I think Mitch put a figure of eight million. And I want to let the Drain Commission have a free hand and get to their work as quickly as possible. Four years to spend it. It takes Drain Commission a long time to do anything, and if we get them started, maybe that's all they'll be able to spend in four years. But maybe we'll have more money. I, I think eight million is good, but that's not what I'm asking for right now. So there's a motion to amend the resolution to provide, to appropriate $4 million to the Drain Commissioner. Is there a second? Given no second, the amendment fails. So we still have the main motion authorizing Rescue Plan Act for the Howl City Drain. Any questions, comments, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. The next resolution is 2022-09-147. It's a resolution authorizing use of Rescue Plan Act funds for the Howell City Drain. Is there a motion?
So moved, Drake. Support.
Motion by Commissioner Drake, support by Commissioner Zajak. This too was talked about in a prior meeting. Are there, are there any follow-up questions, comments? Commissioner Helsner?
I've not been able to weigh in on this. I think it's a wonderful idea. But I think if we do this for everyone, we're gonna take unnecessary time. I, I am going to add a furthermore, I would like to amend this by saying furthermore, be it furthermore resolved that the county commissioners authorize the disbursement of $4 million to be spent by the Drain Commission as priorities, as they prioritize their projects as they have been given to us. I, in my mind, you know, we're nickeling and diming it. Anyways, that's my, that's my amendment. I think that, you know, and this is, I'm doing this because it was about half of the amount that I think Mitch put a figure of eight million. And I want to let the Drain Commission have a free hand and get to their work as quickly as possible. Four years to spend it. It takes Drain Commission a long time to do anything, and if we get them started, maybe that's all they'll be able to spend in four years. But maybe we'll have more money. I, I think eight million is good, but that's not what I'm asking for right now.
So there's a motion to amend the resolution to provide, to appropriate $4 million to the Drain Commissioner. Is there a second? Given no second, the amendment fails. So we still have the main motion authorizing Rescue Plan Act for the Howell City Drain. Any questions, comments, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. The next resolution is 2022-09-147. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal year 2003 memorandum of understanding on cash matching funding for behavioral health managed care services wraparound. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith. Support, Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. Are there follow-up questions, comments, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. The next resolution is 2022-09-147. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal year 2003 memorandum of understanding on cash matching funding for behavioral health managed care services wraparound. Is there a motion?
Motion, Smith. Support, Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Gross. Are there follow-up questions, comments, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The resolution passes. 2022-09-148. It's a resolution establishing compensation for the Livingston County Board of Commissioners for the years 2023 and 2024. Is there a motion?
We've had some time to think about this as it came to personnel earlier this year, and then it moved to our committee meeting last week. And so in order to create a consistent process for commissioner salaries, I suggest that we create a formula to follow for the future, including this year. So I'm gonna give you some of what I'm thinking. Of course, there could be some discussion to change some of it, or all of it, or none of it. First, I think that we should tie these raises to some index. And I'm gonna suggest the Employment Cost Index, the ECI, for state and local government workers. The total compensation for the 12-month percent change is posted on the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics website, so we have a place to go to look that information up. Secondly, I would like to suggest using the ECI rate published in the third quarter of the even year. So we would be looking at September, which, by the way, they don't post until about the end of October. Next, I think we should include a cap on the ECI at 3%. And the, the final increase will be based on whichever is less, 3% or the ECI rate. Finally, if at any time during the year of the increase, there is a countywide or departmental hiring freeze or wage freeze or reduction in county workforce due to budget constraints or COLA for non-union workers is less than 3%, then the formula used will be null and void, and the commissioner's salary will remain the same in the following term. I'm sorry, that was a lot. But it's basically saying that I believe that we should have some sort of go-to so it happens automatically every year at the same time, and we're looking at the same information. And that if, that it shouldn't exceed 3% or, or that would be the maximum. And that, that if there's any, you know, hardships or things going on in the county where our county employees are not getting any type of compensation or increases in that, in that same year, then there's no increase at all for the commissioners.
You want, one, just one, one more. Are you making an amendment, or would you like discussion still before?
I'll start that off with a discussion to see how other people feel about it, and then if everybody sort of agrees, maybe we'll come to some agreement on some form of that or all of it.
Okay.
What I would suggest, it sounds to me like this is reworked. I would suggest that the chairman remand this back to the personal committee to flesh that out there. That's what I would, I would suggest. Because to me, it sounds like it's more than we'll be able to do in a half an hour or, or an hour of discussion here. And I think if we're, if we're kind of aware of it before our meeting, we'll have time to think about it. Maybe have shorter order in, in committee. That's, that's what my suggestion would be.
Any other comments? We, we do have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Gross.
I've given quite a bit of thought, quite a bit of thought to this since the subject first came up last spring. And we heard tonight that, you know, part of our constituents feel we don't deserve a raise. And probably a lot of people might agree with that. I know some past commissioners that I've spoken to have said we should be doing this for free. And that's a good point, I suppose. But two years ago, we voted ourselves a raise because it had been 10 years since the previous raise. And from my personal way of thinking, what we've got now is more than adequate, and I will state here that I'm opposed to any compensation increase for commissioners. I, I don't believe we need to adjust our compensation the way our employees are adjusted every year or according to contracts, et cetera. Maybe we won't be waiting 10 years again, but I think what we're getting now is fair. Thank you.
Any other comments? So if there are no further comments and no amendments, I'm going to call for a vote on the resolution.
I have a comment, but I think that we don't even need a vote on it, because if we don't vote on this, there is no change in our compensation. I, I would suggest that we, that we don't vote on it.
How about that?
Because the first thing we cannot, we cannot, our salary cannot be lessened, done less during our term of office. And we cannot raise our own salary. We can only raise our salary for the next people coming in. At this point, none of us, nobody is elected for next year. We, we hope, we know who's gonna get elected, but we have no idea. And the political climate, it's possible that no incumbent gets elected, you know, that's a possibility too. You know, so we don't, we don't, we don't know. And so, and, and the next time is gonna be a four-year term. So we will not be able to raise our salary every year. You know, this, this, this thing right here says 22, 23. Well, we can only raise our rates once. We can't raise our, so far as I know, we cannot raise our rates now for '23. Is that, is that a fair statement?
You can place in a structured, you can structure a structured increase over time, as long as it's approved before the, the new term. So the 3%, 3%, you can do. What you can't do with all respect is, or it's very questionable, is whether you can link it to the employees, because that would, that would in fact be voting, when you voted on the, the future thing, would be then voting on your own salary at that time. So you can put in a 3%, 3%, 3%, 3%, 3%, that is legal for the next term. The linking it to the employees, you know, my opinion, would not be a proper amendment.
If we want to send this back for further discussion in personnel, I would ask for a motion to postpone indefinitely.
I, so, second.
Motion to postpone indefinitely by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Drake. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Commissioner Drake.
In speaking with my colleagues, a certain person convinced me, I'm pretty sure I was correct, that it wouldn't be a bad idea to wait for the budget to be set, or at least in a better form than it is now, because the statute really says changes in compensation, which means we can reduce or raise, and we can do the structure as the attorney said. So we have different places to go, and next year's gonna be a pretty tough year, and the year after that's gonna be a tough year. So I think waiting to see how we're closer, how much the budget says we might have extra or no extra might be a good thought, and the postponement might work to that also.
Anybody else with comments, questions? Commissioner Plank.
So is the motion to postpone it indefinitely, is it to move it to back to personnel, or is it to move it to a future board meeting?
It, it could be either. I mean, if you, if the, if the same resolu, you could pull the same resolution, you know, at another full board meeting, or we, you could go back to personnel and be, and have a new resolution, start it from scratch.
Mr. Chair, all I ask is that we do it before the election, so are people voting for us? You know, a little something, you know? Because after the election, in effect, the people that are staying on the board are voting for their own race, which is really, is technically legal, but it's, it smells, put it that way.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Commissioner Smith.
Administrator Bird, I have a quick question that maybe you can address. When is the next personnel meeting?
October 17th.
Just a second. Yeah, October, October 17th would be the next. And we have a full board after that before the election?
Yes.
And in your proposal to postpone, are you including the idea that we include not only the salary, but any cost of benefits that may be availed to different board members, whether they accept them or not?
Whatever wants to be, I'm not limiting the future discussion, so. You know, any discussion in the future is legal or could be considered, so.
Point of order, is there, was there? Was there a, was there a second to your amendment?
I didn't have a.
Thank you.
Commissioner Helsner's motion.
Okay, alright.
Are you said commissioners?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor of postponing signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? The, it's postponed. Let's see here. The next is 2022-09-149. It's a resolution approving appointment of the Public Health Officer. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution for discussion.
Support, Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith. Commissioner Helsner.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this. This is the same amendment that Commissioner Nakagiri. Gave in personal committee that was rejected. Under the last, therefore be it resolved, I have a copy of this for you if. If, if it's approved, that Matt Bowling be considered as health officer for the Livingston County Health Department effective. Upon completion of an exhaustive search conducted by Hiring Solutions.
Commissioner Helsner has moved to amend the resolution. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Helsner and support by Commissioner Reader. So we'll debate and discuss the amendment. Is there? Any questions, comments? No questions?
Is there a limit on the amount of money we spend with hiring solutions? As hard as they want?
No, I.
Or is it, or do we have a contract with them that it's already set someplace?
Yeah, we would sign an agreement with him where we would pay 50% upfront and then the other 50% after an appointment is made. So the money doesn't exceed the 21 and a little bit of change, I think.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
One, one comment I'd like to make with respect to this. Proposed amendment. If in fact, we vote to go with a search for hiring solutions. I believe it would be appropriate for us at the same time to. Send a request to the State Department of Health, asking for an extension on Matt Bowling's current appointment as acting. Basically, we're, we're, it would be in October, this coming weekend. I have doubts as to whether we would be able to complete this by the end of December.
Administrator Bird, if that, if it. Do you see any issue with that?
The state will approve an interim appointment for six months. And so right now, Matt's good until December 31st. I think once the job is posted and we get further down the road, certainly you can request an extension of that. So I don't see an issue with doing that if necessary. And I will report back to you on whatever answer we get. I see our attorney raising, saying back there.
Just, just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that, are you said Commissioner Gross?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
A question for our attorney. Is it, is it possible the state would appoint an interim director?
They would not, no, it's not. They would not point an interim director, but they, they basically have three choices, choices. To. Allow an interim director, allow an interim director who does not meet the qualification, which would not be the case here, but. Not meet the qualifications, but they would have to run things through basically a coordinator. Or they would have the ability to basically to, for lack of a better word, run the program correctly.
Careful what you ask for.
But they, they, they don't have the authority to appoint or a director on behalf of the county or. But they would be able to have the authority to approve or disapprove the qualifications.
So you said commissioners.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
You know. Matt has been acting as the health officer since July 1st, and I personally have not heard any complaints on his performance over the last three months. School is in session and I'm unaware of mask mandates or forced vaccine on school aged children. And I would be interested in learning the difference between the schools COVID-19 policies for this year compared to last year. And I believe if it's all right, Matt Bowling, I think, might be on Zoom. I know he's on vacation, but said he would zoom in, so it would be great if we could hear from him. I would, I would really like to understand. I know that there are people in the audience and on Zoom who have had concerns about. What happened to their kids over the last couple of years? And I'm just curious. Because I am from the mindset that we learn over time when we're faced with different things and I'm just curious. At what the differences are. Maybe some of the parents might even know this already, but I'm, I'm just curious if. Matt has had some conversations with any of the schools and how the policies have changed. What, what lessons have been learned? So I don't know, is, is, I don't see Matt Bowling on there, but he might be under another name. I see Rebecca is on there, but I don't know about.
Yeah, Commissioner Plank, with respect to the the amendment on the floor, I think that Matt Bowling's commentary. Is not germane to the discussion or the debate on the amendment on the floor to extend the. Or to implement Commissioner Helsner's amendment. Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Administrator Bird, to put you back up here, but I don't know if we even have an idea of what this process would look like. So far, this, this amendment would simply say, do a search. And then we may find ourselves with a recommendation that puts us in the same question here. We may find ourselves doing something, who knows what? That something might be. Do we have any idea what that would be?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what my process will be. If this amendment passes, I'll call Hiring Solutions tomorrow. And the job will be posted. I believe this week it would be posted. Resumes that are collected would be forwarded to the board for review. But the process you follow from that point is up to the board. All we can handle is the collection of the resumes and the transmittal of information. We. You know, this is an appointment in state law that comes from the board, so our normal procedures that we go through would only happen if you wanted them to happen that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else who hasn't chimed in yet on the amendment before we go around for seconds? Commissioner Reader.
I look at it this way. Hindsight is always 100%. We don't have a crystal ball about what's going to happen in the future. Everybody that's going to get a request to put in a resume has gone through everything that we've gone through in the United States. But at the end of the day, we really don't know what a new candidate is going to be or what it would do. If it would be any different, would it be worse or the same or maybe better? But I think postponing it for 30 days and doing a search is just good business and it certainly would be not doing any harm to wait.
Anybody else who hasn't chimed in yet? I want to voice a couple of thoughts here, at least one thought. You know, I. Whoever the candidate, candidates that are presented to the board, I am very anxious to quiz them publicly. On their perspectives, you know, share with me your perspectives on what we could have done better. What, what, you know? Did we do an adequate job protecting citizens' rights and, you know, a question might, you know, that I can think of would be. Where do you get your information from and how do you reconcile conflicting information from the CDC and other? You know, sources of, of technical, you know, information. I, I want to know those answers to those questions and I, I would like to have them answered publicly. Because I just think that's best because the public ought to know, you know, the, the health officer is a. Position that has great statutory authority. We've seen that. And I, I want to know with as much certainty as I can get, you know. How somebody reconciles conflicting information, you know, how much do they weigh? You know, a citizen's rights versus, you know, their, their health. And yeah, so I'm anxious to hear from more than one candidate. And, and hence I would be voting in favor of Commissioner Helsner's amendment. Commissioner Plank.
So I did some research today and there are two counties here in Michigan that are looking for health officers. One is Ottawa County, ironically enough. And. I was talking with Jennifer, our health, our human resource director, and she said it took nine months just to find an HR. Deputy Director, nine months. And that to me is a position that's pretty popular out there to find somebody. I don't think Jennifer was not doing a. I, I believe Jennifer was out there searching high and low for it, but it took nine months. So this to me is a very specialized. It's not just somebody with a nursing degree or somebody with a medical degree. There's a lot of things, a lot of responsibilities and roles that are played by. That health officer. And I think a lot of people kind of forget that. But to me, it's. Disappointing that we're, we're going to do this and we're going to postpone it because. I think if we postpone this and put it out there and. God forbid, Matt leaves. And goes to Ottawa County or the other county and applies for their job. We're, we're, we're screwed. So that's the way, and I'm sorry. So that's how I feel about it. And so the state, I think what I understood, our legal counsel said was. The state can come in and they could have some say over what goes on here in Livingston County. So if a pandemic starts up again and they say, hey, mask mandate, boom, that's what we're going to be doing. So I'm, I. I'm saying that it, we're, we're really, we're, we're. We're going to throw this out there and I really hope it doesn't come back and slap us in the face. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Plank, anybody else wishing to chime in before? Commissioner Griffin.
So I think keeping in mind if we're going to hire a new person. For this or any other job that we have right now, that entails the whole department. So we're not just talking about one person here. So I hope no one here believes that if we hire someone new that can just move in the job and. The existing staff is going to help that person or work collaborative collaboratively. There, I think the staff that's there right now has worked well with our past health director and also with Matt. Matt's been with the county for over 20 years. He does have a degree in administration. We wanted that. We do have a medical director that we employ. So I think we ought to be cognizant of the fact that someone doesn't just step into this job. And hope that we have full. Employment and validation, but with everybody else is going to work with them. And what, what are we going to do? Hire? A new director and assume that Matt is going to be the deputy director and work under someone new in the county? I think I've told you, I'm the only one probably here on the commissioners that has worked with Matt. I mean, I've heard a lot of comments thrown around about backbone and. That he doesn't have this, he doesn't have that. I would happen to. I, I don't think there's even another commissioner here that has worked with him on the appeals board. I have. Found him to be very professional, found him to be very well organized. When we have an appeals board, he is not a rubber stamper. He deals with very difficult situations. Haven't had anyone tell me that there's a reason that they haven't liked working with Matt. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking here. And also, we talk a lot about COVID at this table, but I'm going to tell you right now, I mean, if, if. Don't forget that there's a lot of other things that this health department does. So they do emergency preparedness services, environment health service. We know that Matt has been part of the public swimming pool codes, the public bathing beaches, the public campgrounds, the body art facilities, the child and adult care facilities. Food protection, housing and indoor water quality, septic systems, waters. When with the PFAS, he came every single meeting and let us know what was going on with that. And now his additional responsibilities include children's health services and care services, chronic disease prevention and management. Community health disease control, hearing and vision screening immunizations, influenza, TV testing, health insurance enrollment, nurses welcome newborns. Public health fact sheets, women, infants and children, to name a few. That are, those are the charges with our health department. So. Although I know COVID has touched every one of us and no one knew how to deal with it. I think the health department did the best they could with what they had and kept these other. Services to our community going.
Commissioner Smith.
Couple, couple of things. One, just a reminder that. This topic has been remanded to the personnel committee. So if there is a. Question and answer that the chair would like to do would have to be during that period. Second. I need to make sure that we all are aware of the timing impact of this request. So being the simple country banker, I'm going to go on 30-day increments because. Administrator Bird mentioned that it would be a 30-day posting. That puts us at roughly the first week of November. At which point. All applicants would need to be in front of the personnel committee. For review in November. To get into either the final. Board of Director meeting in November or early December. Is, is, is that your understanding, sir?
That, that would need to be the case if we're concerned about not getting an extension from MDHHS on the current interim director situation. So. If there are concerns about that, I mean, you know, it. It could be listed for a shorter duration of time, but as far as the board's meeting schedule, the committee meeting schedule, I think what you outlined is probably best case scenario. With a decision being made in December and therefore not needing the extension from the state.
My convention that if this motion carries, that that would need to be the case because the other risk is that the state could. Also act as our health director, according to our attorney.
Good, just for clarification. To our attorney, could not the state extend the interim status of Mr. Bowling?
No, absolutely.
You said absolutely, he could.
They can extend it.
Okay.
There, it's, they're, it's, the six months is automatic. After that, it's discretionary.
Okay, thank you.
I will just pass this along. I don't know what their answer would be. When, when we were going through the paperwork for the interim appointment and they specified the six months. They did say that they don't prefer extensions. Don't know what that means, not, not using that as a threat because I don't know if they'd extend or not, but I don't think they do it very often. But I can certainly inquire with them further as to what that would look like and what their likely answer would be.
Wow, just Commissioner Smith, are you?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
So in our. Pulling up committees, isn't that a three-week? Posting or 14-day posting? Where can we come up with a 30-day posting?
You're referring to board and commission appointments. I think we typically try to post them for two weeks. Since there's a timeframe outlined in the policy, we usually have them posted for two weeks. When we post a job through HR, we typically will post for two weeks. And then make a decision to post longer. If there's a need to post longer. You know, it's really up to us how we do that. You're going to dictate to us how long this is going to be posted. It can, we can, we can instruct Hiring Solutions to post for whatever timeframe the board prefers. But typically, we would go in two-week increments if we were doing this on our own.
Anybody else? Commissioner Drick.
To Commissioner Smith, when we hired Nathan, the personnel committee took six hours, three applicants. And questioned them thoroughly. And then after that, the nine-member commission got it, got a three or four-hour. Question and answer with the two that remained. So there's a chance that we all could do it at commission table. Or just let the committee do it and suffice. There's a chance because somehow we did it before. Okay, so there's a chance we can do that. We already have a. An applicant, so I'm not worried about a nine-month period of going without any applicants. When we first discussed this. When we first discussed this, the very first meeting, my position was that I wanted choices. My position was that if Matt comes out on top of all the choices, I would welcome him to the job. So I'm not going to waver. I'm going to seek the hiring solutions, hiring solutions procedure. And if we shorten it up a little bit, that might help with us not having to run the risk of the state of Michigan thinking they want to come down here and run something. But I think those bureaucrats are lazy enough, they wouldn't want to do it.
Commissioner Drick, are you good?
Concluded.
Just in response, I, again, I'm going back to our committee about 60 days ago that remanded the issue to the personnel committee. That's, that's where that comment came from.
I get it. Thank you.
Commissioner Zajak?
Thank you. I just want to point out, we also appointed Kevin to the facilities position without this, what we're doing now. Just want to make that point. Thank you.
Going, Commissioner Helsnerman?
I, my position, and if I have a crystal ball, my crystal ball, is this board is going to hire Matt. That's my, that's my feeling. I think that when Hiring Solutions looks around, they're not going to find very many people as well qualified for the whole job. Most, most of the discussion tonight is about a, a small but very important part of the job. So when we're looking for the whole job, Matt's going to be way up here. And I've said before, my question is, you know, this is about the amendment. I have no question that Matt's going to be high. And at the end of this, that's the reason that the first I was, let's go straight to Matt, just like this resolution says. That's, that's what I favored because I think that's what this board's going to do. When I talk with Diane McCormick and I talk with Matt Bowling, I get a whole different picture of these people than what is presented by, you know, the experiences that you have, and I don't doubt your experiences at all. But in my mind, we're, we were very blessed to have a person like Diane McCormick to be our health director. There were, she had incredible pressure from outside sources to be much more strict. She had, all of her colleagues in other counties said, you need to do this and you need to do that and you need to do the other thing. And she, there are a lot of things she didn't do. And I, I have no question that she did the things that you said that she did and that some of those things were not handled correctly. I, you know, and, and I don't, but, and I get the same sense when I talk with Matt. I'm looking, you know, I, so my expectation of this is that, you know, Matt's going to be on the top of the heap. That's, and, and, and I think you know that I, I share all of your concerns. And I, I talked to Matt today, says I, I don't know if I can vote for you, but that's kind of where I'm leaning. But, you know, I listen to you folks and so anyways, I, that's my, just let you know what I'm thinking. And knowing my colleagues here and knowing Matt, I think that's where it's going to end up, but I think we should do this first, so.
Anything else from commissioners?
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Have we clarified with council whether or not this is a material change to the resolution that left committee such that it can be considered in this fashion as, as proposed by Commissioner Helsnerman?
It's not up to council to make that call. It's up to the chair.
Understood. So, so you've made the determination it's not a material change? Is that right?
Me, I made the determination it is a, an amendment that comports with Robert's rules.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Any further discussion? I'll, I will close out things and say, if we go ahead and hire Matt Bowling tonight, we, I, I'm not going to speak for others. I have, and I believe everybody else, has never had a chance to elicit Mr. Bowling's views in a public venue. You know, it's almost kind of similar, I'll, I'll look at it as similar as the confirmation process of a, of a, somebody on the Supreme Court. The public is owed that public dialogue to, to hear right from the candidate himself what their views are. And, you know, that, that didn't, didn't have that chance in the personnel committee. Mr. Bowling wasn't presented, you know, brought forward in, in the personnel committee, nor is he here tonight. And I, I, I think that is just another reason why I'm, I'm desirous of voting yes for Commissioner Helsnerman's resolution. So with that being said, I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Just before I do the roll call, can I clarify, Commissioner Helsnerman, that you will provide me the language of your motion to amend?
Right. Here, Omar.
I, I would like to restate the motion for the record.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. It's a motion to amend the last, therefore be it resolved, that Matt Bowling be considered as health officer for the Livingston, Livingston County Health Department effective upon completion of an exhaustive search conducted by Hiring Solutions. That motion was made by Commissioner Helsnerman and supported by Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Doesn't give a timeframe, says exhaustive search.
It does not. I read, I read the amendment as it was presented to me and as supported.
Would you be open to a friendly amendment?
Personnel committee, the details of it.
If the author is open to a friendly amendment?
Pardon?
I said if the author is open to a friendly amendment with Commissioner Byrd stating that they go in, in a two-week increment?
Yes, that we go in a two-week increment. Yes, that. For collecting names and then after two, if we have enough names after two weeks, then we would go right directly to Hiring Solutions. But just, this is, we will consider Matt. That's what this says. We will consider Matt. That's what they're, but, you know, as I listen to, you know, in addition to whatever, whoever Hiring Solutions brings, that's.
I, I have added the additional words in two-week, two-week increments. I want, I want to make sure, I'm, I don't want my wording imposed in this. I, I really want it to come from the commissioner.
So, so again, in, in order to facilitate a friendly amendment, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, Commissioner Helsnerman, is that it be a two, two-week increment, not to exceed 30 days, so that it can be adjudicated this calendar year. We'll say one to two, two-week increments for posting, that this be posted, you know, that the job be posted for two weeks. Additional two weeks if needed.
The, if that's, that's seconder of the motion, is that okay?
It's fine. I'd like to have it read back though, because it sounds like we're hiring him even after we do the search. Okay. It doesn't say consider. Therefore be it resolved that Matt Bowling be considered as health officer for the Livingston County Health Department effective upon completion of an exhaustive search conducted by Hiring Solution in two-week increments and in a two-week increment and additional two weeks if necessary. I think I should say considered for the position.
Yeah, yeah.
Or considered as an applicant, something like that.
As an applicant because we, we're not saying Matt is the only person we're considering, you know, or that, you know.
Therefore be resolved that Matt Bowling be considered as an applicant as health officer for the Livingston County Health Department effective upon completion of an exhaustive search conducted by Hiring Solutions in a two-week increment and additional two weeks if necessary.
That's fine. We want to clear that it's an exhaustive search.
Commissioner Gross?
What are we going to do if after two, two-week attempts Hiring Solutions can't find anybody? We, we have Mr. Bowling and, and we have the resume that was resented to us tonight from his con, correct? I would think if Hiring Solutions comes up empty, we have two candidates and we would proceed to act upon those. Correct?
I think that sounds, sounds right.
That's, that's up to the personnel committee, I would think. Because there'll be a lot of names coming in, Hiring Solutions will say, these fit the criteria. And then the, the personnel committee will be doing the, you know, private, has special meetings, have decide how, how you bring it down to two or three or whatever, whatever you want.
I, I personally am not in favor of hiring Hiring Solutions. I would be in favor of us posting it at the county level through our HR group, but I'm extremely concerned about the amount of time that might be consumed in, in that regard. I just want to alert my colleagues that there could very well be the, the need for at least one, if not more, special meetings to resolve this. Thank you.
Anything else before we vote? Restate the amendment if you were, Clerk Conley, and then we'll have a roll call vote.
Therefore be it resolved that Matt Bowling be considered as an applicant as health officer for the Livingston County Health Department effective upon completion of an exhaustive search conducted by Hiring Solution in a two-week increment and an additional two weeks if necessary.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak?
Go.
Commissioner Griffith?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
No.
Commissioner Plank?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Motion to amend fails.
We have the main motion on the floor, which is to hire Matt Bowling. Is there any? Commissioner Gross?
I would like to propose an amendment to take into consideration a posting by the county in lieu of going to Hiring Solutions.
Is there support?
All supported.
It goes to be for the two-week time or?
What time period?
Two, two-week.
Two weeks followed by two weeks.
So basically, this, is it, just for clarification, the same as the prior amendment, but not using Hiring Solutions, that we'll post it on our own?
Yes, sir.
Last for a roll call vote on the amendment?
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak?
Yes.
And Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries.
So we have an amended motion. Is there any further discussion?
So we are not making the decision tonight whether to hire Matt or not. That, that's my understanding, that we're posting. So then, another question then, okay, so we're getting all of these, these names in. And then is it still the personnel committees to take all these names, have special meetings and, and go through rate and all that sort of thing? So that, that, that doesn't change at this point, so.
Correct. What, make a recommendation then to the board?
Yes, I would think that that would be the way it would go, so.
Are you, I'll set Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yeah, it's just that, the thing with Hiring Solution, and I guess it won't be, we have a lot of first personality traits and things like that. And personally, I think that would be a great plus for Matt. Personally, I think that, that those personality things, he would shine in. At, at this point, it's just our, you know, our, our judgment. So, but that's why we're, we're commissioners, because people think we have good judgment. They elected us to have good judgment, so.
Commissioners Zajak?
Thank you. So, so just to be clear, there's nothing that prescribes the process in terms of special meetings or anything of this nature. We would receive information from the administrator and then Personnel Committee would make its decisions on how it proceeded, whether it's receiving and reviewing and then casting a vote based on a recommendation or a resolution that's put forward by any member of the board and Personnel Committee. So I don't think that assumption that we're, we have special meetings and secret interviews and all these other things that, that maybe folks are interested in doing, this is, this is strictly a posting that will last for two weeks and then the Personnel Committee will decide the adequacy of it in some fashion and then we'll proceed however we will. So that, that's, that's what's before us. I don't think there should be a misconception of, of a, a process that is not defined. Thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
Further point of clarification, I, I didn't know if I should include it in my proposed amendment, which we voted on, but I think it's a given that resume from Matt Bowling and Miss Khan should be. should be considered by our administrator as being the first two, um, names to be considered.
Any other comments? So what, now I've lost track. Where are we at?
We have an amended, uh, resolution. It was moved by Commissioners Ajax and it was seconded by Commissioner Griffith.
Or the, the posting for thir, up to 30 days, correct? Or we?
No, we've already voted on that amendment and that amendment passed. So we're going to be voting on the amended resolution.
Okay, all right. So any, any, any discussion before we have a final vote here?
So a yes vote means that we're not hiring Matt Bowlang, but we are asking the adminis, we're approving, the process of asking the administration to have HR posted.
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I would just suggest that, that our, our Personnel Committee Chair work with our administrator and our HR director to set up the process. That would be my suggestion. Yeah, get updates for meetings.
All right, vote on the amended, um, resolution. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have the two resolutions that were added at the end. These are the ones regarding the court. So the next one will be 2022 dash zero nine dash one five zero. It's a resolution authorizing the juvenile court to accept the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant for fiscal year 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved Griffith.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Plank. This, um, is, Debbie Shaw still with us? Yes. If you could present on this, you know, we had, this has not been discussed in, in committee, so if you would be so kind to give us a little bit of background.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for taking these resolutions up this evening. The first one is a resolution, um, as Commissioner Nakagiri said, to accept the Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant. You approved the application back in June. This is the fourth year that we've been awarded funds from the Department of Health and Human Services to help it enhance legal representation of children and parents who are in the child abuse and neglect process, court process. This is a reimbursement grant where we get, uh, we spend the money and are reimbursed for a portion of our costs based on a formula, um, that has to do with the penetration rate or, or the poverty rate really in the community and of the children and families that are coming through to the court. This grant is for $42,750 this year and would go from October 1 through September 30th, 2023. The, um, awards were made quite late in the process, which is why I'm coming at the very last minute to you today. I learned this morning that we would not be eligible for any reimbursement until the grant contracts were signed.
Questions for Ms. Shaw? All those in, oh, this one requires a roll call vote. The attorney had informed me.
Correct. Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next and final resolution is, uh, will number 2022 dash oh nine dash one five one. It's a resolution author, authorizing the acceptance of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Raise the Age Grant for Fiscal Year 2023. Is there a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you. Uh, like the last grant, uh, this is coming sort of at the last moment. This grant, um, we were granted permission to apply for this grant back in June. The Raise the Age Grant allows for reimbursement 100% of the costs that are not eligible for childcare funding for those new 17-year-olds that are coming to the juvenile court. As you may recall, October 1 of 2021, Raise the Age took a fact where 17-year-olds who, are alleged to have committed an offense, a crime in the community, are charged now in the juvenile court instead of the adult criminal court. And this is one of the facets of reimbursing the county for the expenses of shifting those kids to the more expensive juvenile system, the rehabilitation system. This grant is in the amount of $95,000 for the period of October 1st, uh, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. It is also a reimbursement grant and all eligible expenses, um, that we seek reimbursement for are reimbursed at 100% of their cost.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Shaw? Seeing none, all those, oh, this is another roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman. Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're on to item 13, um, look for a motion to pay the claims dated, uh, September 26th and also the payables dated September 3rd to, through September 16th. There's, there are a motion to pay the claims and the payables. Support by Commissioner Reader, support by Commissioner Smith. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, same sign. We paid the bills. We're at our second call to the public. This is two minutes in duration. Anybody wishing to address the, uh, board? Give a card to the clerk and, um,
Barb Khan from Brighton Township, followed by, I have several cards. Barb Khan from Brighton Township and then Barbara Tonkovich will be following that.
You have two.
I just wanted to, uh, let you know a little bit about nursing. It's not just running up and down hospital halls. It is, uh, more than that. It is putting people first and being their advocate. That is what we are taught to do and that is what we do firsthand. Also, there are other roles which I have played a part in. I've made, uh, policies on emergency disaster and carried those out during boots-on-the-ground, uh, exhibits with different agencies. So it's not just being a nurse. There are many other things involved with it, including childcare. I was a pediatric hematology and oncology nurse. There are many things, many aspects to it. And first and foremost, we put people first. That's it.
Thank you.
Barbara Tonkovich, Tonkovich from Genoa, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Since you brought up the ballot proposals, I just want to comment, um, on that, the first proposal, 22-1. The, uh, to amend the state constitution, uh, it talks about, let's see, amend the annual public financial disclosure report. That's a good thing, but it's got pork in it. And that's the pork, change state legislator term limit to 12 total years in legislature. We already did term limits and I encourage you, for whatever reason that you were talking about the ballots, that we do not include that because when they start putting pork in ballots, that's when we've got a problem. And then the last one was, uh, county, uh, county veterans service program. I'm for the veterans. It's got pork in it. It says, "A small portion of the village may also be dispersed to the downtown development authorities of the cities of Brighton, Howell and villages of Fowlerville, Pinney. The Tax Increment Finance Authority of the city of Howell and the local development finance authorities of the city of Brighton and the village of Fowlerville." That's pork. If they would keep these two, whatever you guys do with these ballots, they need to know there's pork in these two and we need to separate them out. That's why I hope people will vote no. Just one quick comment. This personal, uh, personnel department, HR stuff, gee, I wonder if they're going to be biased and want to have Matt and be biased against anybody else who goes in there. We need to have public, we need to have the public, like you got, Wes, you had suggested. The public can come and listen to Matt. Why is he hiding? Sounds like Biden.
Thank you.
Jennifer Smith, Genoa Township. What I saw here tonight, um, was really disheartening is the fact that commissioners are over here stringing themselves up to fight for a candidate working at the health department, but you didn't fight for our kids. In fact, when we asked you to be a part of your secret meetings with the superintendents and the malfeasances that were going on behind closed doors with the former health director, you shut the door on us, slammed it, wouldn't let us into those meetings either. And yet you sat here trying to get the guy on the Zoom. And I find it appalling as a parent that you did this. And why isn't the guy here if he wants the job? If the guy wants the job, why isn't he here like Ms. Khan, saying, "I want the job." And for all the public who doesn't like me, here I am, let me show myself. Why isn't that happening? And I don't know what this little thing is over here over with this guy and then this going on. There seems to be a lot of backdoor little things going on here. It's a, like a little triangle. So maybe you did the right thing tonight, maybe you didn't. But it's sad that you would fight so hard for this, but you wouldn't fight for kids. And I can't wait to see the faces of Fiani and Deaton and Sample on that board.
See any hands raised on Zoom, so I'm going to go ahead and close the call to public. Going to go ahead and close the call to public and ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Helsman, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed or adjourned?